Nice start.
We have, oh, and did, uh, Mark say he wasn't gonna be here this?
Yeah, I knew he wasn't coming. That's why, yeah, we're good.
Well, then, um, here we go.
And I, and I will tell you, I forgot to invite Jesse, so don't, I, I, I really did. And I just invited Jesse to Monday night's meeting because I, he was out for a couple of weeks and so he's back, so.
You're giving him a little more paternity leave.
Well, you know, uh, well, I didn't know if there would be anything. I know he's working on a lot of stuff behind the scenes right now from the other meetings, so. Um, and I know we don't have information, you know, answers on that stuff yet, so, um.
Yeah, he can have another morning to sm- smuggle his baby. It's fine.
There you go.
Yeah, no shame in that. Not at all.
Right, so, uh, yeah, here we are, Saturday morning work session. Let's, uh, run through the agenda for Monday night's meeting. And then with any time left over, we had said we would discuss, uh, you know, what we thought were potential responsibilities for, uh, clerk of council and planning and zoning clerk as potential new roles within the village. But we'll start with the meeting agenda. Right, we have two me, two sets of minutes on the agenda. Have, have, has everybody taken the time to review those? If not, make sure that you have by Monday. We have uh, our regular village reports, which from those of us here from a council perspective, Tony, are you prepared to have your planning and zoning report?
Yeah, we just had a meeting against.
Okay, just, just making sure, uh, and Diane.
I'd be reporting on my, my former committee assignment or my newer committee assignment.
Well, we still have you as the, the liaison to planning and zoning.
Well, right, I, um.
I would, I would certainly hope that you would be reporting on your current committee assignment, so if you have not had a meeting, then I would imagine you should be getting updates from whomever held that seat beforehand. Uh, which takes us up to, uh, in village reports, Diane. You're prepared for an MPCA report?
Uh, right, I can do that, or Mark can do that. Um, we never really settled that, I guess, is who is doing that.
Right, your, your, your name is the one that's on the, on the agenda, so I'm looking to you.
And we, yeah, how about that, Mayor?
Uh, yeah, I don't know why, uh, sorry, I told you guys my desk was a mess and I, I, you know, I wouldn't be able to wait, so, um. I'll cha- yeah, I think we just kinda went back and forth because somebody had said something about, well, you're in the meetings now because of whatever, and I think at the time David had missed a couple in a row.
Right.
Um, so I think that that's, I mean, Mark lives with one, so to me, i- it's a two-second swap-out for, um, Lisa to do it, so honestly, I'm leaving it to you guys to decide.
I, I think, uh, if, since David is, 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 although, no, a lot of times, David, you're not available, but if I could back up David, how?
That's fine.
So is, is, is David the official MPCA liaison? Because that's.
I believe I am, yes. I, I sadly did have a stretch where my work schedule was messed up and I couldn't, and that's largely, that should be resolved.
Okay, uh, then, uh, it sounds like for this time around, we still need someone to do it. Uh, Diane, I think you said that you are capable of.
Right.
So why don't we, for this meeting, Diane, if you would be kind enough to be prepared with that update for Monday, and then going forward, it can go back to David. Does that sound about right?
Right, and like I said, if David can't make it for some reason, I can back him up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very good. Then, moving on to, uh, council reports. Uh, community, uh, you know, again, for these purposes, I am really just looking for people to socialize whatever highlights there are in their reports, so that way we know, nobody's surprised, there's no big, you know, uh, no big drama, right? We can be prepared, and if there's questions, now is a better time to get them out than in the middle of the working meeting. Uh, is for a community, David, do, are you prepared with your report? Are there any highlights we should be made aware of?
Um, nothing crazy. Like I said, a couple, you know, of the last month's, you know, thing we have, uh, we'll be expanding act, we'll be expanding vending options at the pool, um, the the pricing stuff's finalized. Um, the main thing recently is that I sent out something for the newsletter to the mayor about uh, soliciting ideas for, or, you know, soliciting early ideas for what our first weekend in June's, um, our first annual, you know, diversity celebration weekend thing should look like to the perspective of our villagers, so hopefully some of our community emails me and shoots some ideas of things we could do, but other than that.
No supri- no surprises.
Right, uh, then, moving on to finance, uh, and that's me, we did have a meeting. Uh, reviewed the year-end financials, uh, and discussed uh, potential, a potential financing option for, uh, lake dredging and also possibly a portion of the community building, and that would be, uh, borrowing against, uh, future TIF revenues. Uh, and so, from the, from the, from that meeting, the outcome or the takeaway was, we asked Mayor Hughes to work with, uh, the uh, our attorney's office front, Frost, Brown, Todd, right? I forget whether, which way the Brown and the Todd go in there, but, uh, uh, they, because we are aware that they have a person on their staff that is sort of a specialist in that kind of thing. Uh, so we were looking to get some information on how that might look, uh, for, for potential lending. Uh, and our next meeting will be once we have some answers to that question, once we know that we have information, we'll, we'll need again. Uh, Joe is streets and he's not here. Uh, Diane, have you had a communications meeting to report on?
Uh, right, we had one, uh, yes, yesterday. There's Thursday, Thursday, um, and, uh, yes, so we, mostly I wanted to cover, uh, the newsletter situation. Um, because we're not sure about, uh, MPCA's, uh, commitment. I'm hoping to get a clarification, but that won't happen till after the Monday meeting, but, so I, I'm not gonna make a deal about it, but we talked about the newsletter and contents and things like that, so.
Great. Uh, Tony, safety, have you, I don't know if you've had a safety meeting since, uh, since last, uh, month, right? Okay, and I, I don't know that there was anything pressing to report from, from my, the end of my tenure there.
Well, I was on that committee, I don't recall anything pressing.
I mean, we were, we were, we were talking about some stuff, but nothing that was all that important. Uh, and then last up would be legislation, and that's Councilperson Berger, who's not here. Uh, I know that uh, he was working on, uh, the legislation that, I think it's probably on here for first reading, the uh, amending the section two oh four dot one of the codified ordinances, and that was the one regarding rebranding and logos and whatnot. I think that was the big thing going on in legislation. Uh, which takes us to the legislation portion of the agenda. Right, and so we have, uh, the final reading for appointing, uh, our canine officer, Officer Kimba, or Kimber, pardon me. Uh, third reading for, uh, the mad scientist, that's the people that we're working with for the grant, uh, for the Lily Pond and one of the retention ponds. Oh. Councilperson Bruger, welcome.
Oh, hi.
We'll let you, we, Mark, I was.
I just think it's cause, it's cause mute on.
Oh, yeah, I was just starting to, we're, we're kinda sailing through the agenda this morning. Uh, so we are up to, uh, uh, committee reports and then legislation, so if you have a report that you wanted to update us on for legislation, and then if you wanna just review the legislation on the agenda.
Um, I do not have the agenda pulled up because I do not have my double screen right now.
Uh-oh.
I'm on my single screen. So, uh, yeah, the only report I have is last time we met, we talked about the, uh, the, uh, changing signage stuff that I got Tiffany the other day, so we'll see a first, uh, reading of that on Monday, and let me get a full screen and I can go over the legislation here.
Oh, I, I do just remember, um, if I could monopolize a moment of your time, that, um, um, me and myself and, um, that mayor were talking about having the ability to provide vaccinations for COVID down the road within Minerva Park, because now we have these testing things, and that got my mind rolling on that. And the last thing, I know we were in touch with the Franklin County Department of Health on what requirements there would be for doing that, because I can get, I can give a vaccine in any place from a hospital to, you know, a back alley, but I just wanna do things, you know, according to, you know, what legal requirements there are, um, for the distribution of these things, um, and apparently there are a few other people who live in the village who would likely be able to assist in a distribution effort like that, so. I guess we're just waiting to hear back from them, is my understanding?
Yes, hopefully we'll hear something by Monday, whether or not it's even an option.
Okay.
So.
The vaccines.
Well, and that, we would be on like the Franklin County list, like there's actual list of like who distributes, like we were able to get the, um, test kits, like he was saying, um, and that's one of the, which obviously is much simpler, and they have, like, you can be put on a registry for like anybody to be able to come to the village. Like, I've just posted it on the village site, like I didn't have them put it on like a national thing to where we have every person under the sun and moon coming in. Um, I opted not to do that at this point, so, but, so then as soon as, um, David had reached out, I reached out to Franklin County to see if, a- and we know it's not gonna be right this second, I mean, CBS is fighting to get the vaccine to be able to do it, we know that.
Yeah, the biggest issue will likely be logistics and, um, storage.
Right, I mean, we would theoretically probably, oh, you know, I would think Johnson and Johnson would be the one that we would would be one of the, would be the easiest option in the event that we could do it, so.
Yeah.
Boring, you know, so i- it's a, it's a thing that they may say, you know, not a chance in this world, they also, if you pull up our zip code, there's actually not really anything, they're all either four three two two nine or, um, whatever, so there's really not much in our zip code. Um, but they all, you know, again, they may say that they've got plenty, that they don't need anymore locations, so it would be like a one-day type thing, or, um, every other weekend or something, you know, I mean, that was kind of our thoughts, but.
Call me.
Yeah. Yeah, and I know that there's a lot of nurses in the village, I think you guys know that as well, maybe we could easily, I think we could easily get volunteers to do it on if we advertised it for specific days to get it done, so it may just be too much for us and that, you know, once we got the list of, these are the requirements, i- if, but it was, it's a, it's a, why not try? And we're gonna, why not try?
I think especially if they, maybe not so much now, but once they open it up in the late spring, early summer for a free-for-all, um, doing it for village, uh, if, if, again, it would have to be the Johnson Johnson one, uh, for logistics purposes, but I think, uh, that would be, that could be really interesting to do something like that. Um, see, I, I'm from, I'm old enough to remember standing in line for the polio vaccine, so, um, you know, these things happened in the neighborhood, and, uh, you know, they, that's how it got done back then, so. Um, although it was, you didn't have to, it wasn't quite as difficult to distribute it back then, but uh, I think that's, I, I don't think we should even think about doing it now, but
Right.
Because I've seen all the paperwork and all, everything involved, and the two-step, and the registration card, and the waiting, you know, you have to be really well organized, uh, and to, uh, to, you know, get that, get that done, but anyway, but I, I agree, in principle, I think it's a, a, an interesting thing to.
I completely agree, I, like, for me, the only, the only thought I have is the Johnson and Johnson one and out, so, you know, I mean, to me, that would be a great option if we could, if we could make it happen, and again, I, I think that, um, it might be a long shot, so.
The other, the other thing is, is I, I hear on the radio that there are, I don't know if this applies to anyone in our community, but uh, that there are seniors who are just staying at, who are by themselves and who are not even trying to, uh, even though they're qualified based on age, they're not trying to uh, attempt to go out and do anything, and I don't know if we have any one of them like that in the village, but, um, I don't know how we would, we could necessarily find out, maybe, maybe we could, you know, put it in the newsletter, put it on Facebook, do you know somebody? But we, if we could have a, because I wouldn't mind driving someone to.
Right.
I could do it, I have the time, so I'm sure there's other people in the village that could do it. I think the person that, who's living at home alone may not be, uh, really keen on having a stranger even though they're from the village, take them somewhere, I don't know, but I think it's, it would be something that would be nice to put feelers out of, uh, if anyone, uh, needed help that way.
Right, and I think after, after the experience trying to schedule my mom and dad's vaccines, um,
Yeah, that's changed, that's changed, I, I can, I can, I could tell you now that the last five days, it's opened up. And, uh, a- a- opened up and, uh, the, they had no trouble at all.
Uh, try again, it took me over five hours to do it yesterday.
Yeah, where, which one did you try for? Uh, we're, we're, we're getting in the weeds right now, but.
Oh, no, the Kro- okay, so when you go on the Kroger one, you go.
Do, do the, uh, do the hospitals, forget the little guys, but if you go like to.
Figure out how to even get on, and, okay, this is, this is a perfect example, like, for me, I know what I'm doing, and I, it was like so much, like, uh, first off, I don't have time to sit there, so I wish you would've told me that, to figure out who does what, so the only thing I thought of, I went on like Walgreens and Myers and all of that, and you have to do some registration, and so I was like, yeah, no.
Yeah, yeah.
No, didn't do all that, so then I went to Kroger and I'm like, okay, I can actually schedule one with name and address, so I clicked on Kroger, and you would, you would pick the first shot, and then it would go to the second shot, and it'd be like, sorry, we're sold out for the second shot, then you go back, and then they don't have any appointments, and oh, for the love of God, Lord knows you can't even get two in the same place, so my mom's going to China in two days, and my dad's going to Japan in two days, so I don't even know where they're at, but they're not anywhere near here.
Wow. You know, we, we did the, there's, uh, Schattenstein's has it for anyone that's Schonstein's has it, and, uh, so, and I, and I was at, uh, Mount Carmel, so I was at Mount Carmel. Get the Johnson and Johnson, so he went to Schattenstein's, but ended up not getting the Johnson and Johnson, but he tried for that, and both, both of us were able to, my husband actually, John is actually technophobes. Anyway, he picked up the phone and called the phone number, and they picked up right away and gave him a, I mean, I was shocked. They called him, it rang once, that he said, give me an appointment, they gave him one, and we, we went and it was fine.
Yeah, I should've done that because.
It was amazing.
That, the, the end of this part is, mom goes, well, we're registered at Myers, and I said, okay, I go, when did you register at Myers? Mom goes, like, two weeks ago, I'm like, so you think somebody from Myers is gonna eventually pick up the phone and call you like in six months and tell you they have a shot? I'm like, what are you doing? I'm like, no, you have to go, so, and now my mom is not, like, by any stretch, I mean, she can work on the computer and do all that stuff, but she's just like, no, they're gonna call us, I'm like, mom, you, you, you've lost your mind. So, I, that's what I did yesterday, I spent five hours in the middle of work trying to, now, it wasn't five straight hours, like, I was literally because it would, you would put in your zip code with Kroger, which is what I love.
Make you watch through that, yeah, no, I did that stuff early on, and it, it was ridiculous, but it's, uh, I mean, uh, we, we're in the, um, Mount Carmel health system for doctors, and they kept popping these emails, and I would click on the email and would say, oh, sorry, we don't have any, and that's like, why did you send me an email, so. Finally, I clicked on it and it popped and it said, hey, we got five appointments, when do you wanna come in, it's like.
So if we can wrangle this back in, it sounds like, uh, it sounds like there is a potential appetite to seeing what we could do to be able to have a vaccination station here in the village, it sounds like it would only be if we could provide the Johnson and Johnson, because that's a one-shot and you're done kinda situation, and it sounds like uh, councilperson McNamara and Mayor Hughes are doing what they're doing, and that sounds delightful. Now, we can get back to, uh, legislation with Councilperson Berger.
Yeah, so, uh, from Monday, excuse me for a moment. Uh, for Monday, we have the, uh, third reading of our Kimber, I don't think we need to say anything about that. Third reading of mad scientists, um, also, I don't think we really need much to say about that. Our EMS and declaring it an emergency. I, I know we did that, so we have a second reading, is everyone gonna be okay with passing that wave and readings and declaring an emergency?
Have we heard any pushback at all from the community?
No.
All right, then I suppose that's, that's fair enough for my taste, because we're trying to make money, not do anything shady with an emergency, okay?
Yeah. Um, we'll take a first reading, uh, uh, amending two hundred four point one, that's the putting the correct description of our flag in, and then, uh, making some rules for changing logos and such, and the oh four twenty twenty-one. Mayor Hughes, you wanna talk about that a little bit, supplemental approach, is that probably just moving some money around to places it needs to be done?
That was for the, and that's what I was actually getting ready to check, for some reason, I was thinking that might've been third reading, I, I'm gonna verify that because I thought I did that with the mad scientist, and maybe my mind's not. Um, because that, I'm not even pulling it up, I should pull it up and make sure I'm not saying something, but I'm pretty positive that was just the grant money moving around for, um, the project for Lily Pond, we were awarded a grant.
Yeah.
A grant.
You, you're right, that's exactly what that meant.
So, but for some reason, I thought I did those the same day, but maybe we didn't get it on in time, so I will verify that it is in fact second. I mean, it definitely says second reading everywhere.
And let's say, when I have any questions on any of that, that is our legislative agenda from Monday.
All right, well, then, uh, that, any, while we are here, uh, right, we are down, oh, yeah, yeah, I see your hand.
No, it should be third reading, just as an FYI, I will get that fixed, because I thought I did it the same day.
Uh, so with that, is there any, at this time, any old business that people are intending to raise during this, uh, business meeting on Monday?
Oh, I, no, I guess it's not a business, okay.
Or new business that people are intending to raise on, uh, on Monday?
Um, I've been asked to, uh, I've, I've been asked to, uh, ask the police chief, so I'm, I'm saying that I'm gonna ask the police chief. Uh, you know, uh, I talked to a couple of people who were concerned about the carjackings in the park, and um, were, they talked to me about their, there's, their, um, residents who've been in the park for a while, so they know about the old block watch that they used to have, and neighborhood watch, and so they were talking about that and talking about the carjackings and stuff, and so they were, they felt like maybe, they felt that the police department was being rather quiet about it, and hadn't said anything to, to the residents, or there hadn't been anything in the newsletter, so they just wanted to, uh, to know what approach the police were taking to the rise in crime in the area, so I'm going to ask him that question so he could speak to it in case there are people watching that, that would.
For my own clarification, when you say carjackings in the village, because I'm not aware of anybody's car being stolen
Yeah.
with a, with a person in the car, do I, I hadn't heard of that, so if that's a thing, then yeah, that's a perfectly fair question.
So Tiffany, has there been one in the park?
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah.
People are leaving their cars running, um, this has happened more than once. Um, people are leaving their, and, and we won't get in the weeds of this, people are going out, they're starting their car, and they are disappearing, and it has happened more than once, it's happened more than twice. Um, and same thing with leaving your cars unlocked, if you leave your cars unlocked, people are rummaging through it, but miraculously, if you leave your car doors locked, they walk right past.
No, it's a, yeah, no, I'm not gonna bring up the fact that people don't lock their cars, I think that's crazy, but, uh, but I'm just, okay, so it's not a carjacking, it's just stealing someone's car that's running in the driveway, idling, okay?
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that the language is clear, so that it, it doesn't imply more than it is, right? A carjacking, in my head, is
Stealing your car in your driveway in the middle of the day.
Yeah.
While it's idling is still kind of a freakout, especially if you go.
Theft is crappy no matter what, right? Having your, having your personal property and space invaded is never delightful, but you know, there is a, a chasm between being yanked out of your car, or, car, at gunpoint, which is what my imagination goes to with carjacking, and having your car stolen while it's running unlocked in your driveway.
Right.
Two very different things, and I just wanna make sure that we're communicating what, what needs communicated there.
And then, I don't know if he will get into the weeds on something, and I don't wanna get into the, not into the weeds on something, but him and I had a conversation about a particular device, um, that could potentially help with, again, I don't wanna go into detail, because I don't know that, how much they want everybody to know what they're coming into, does that make sense? Like, I guess if you tell somebody I have this, then, okay, so, and maybe that's more of a safety meeting type thing, and also, we haven't gotten it yet because we, I don't know if we're gonna have to request, um, an appropriation for it, I am completely on board for it. Um, and it's a matter of whether or not we would do one or two, there was also a discussion of maybe like a thirty-day trial type thing, again, I don't wanna go into this, but um, obviously, the police department is completely, and I'll let him speak to this, but just for you guys, police department obviously is getting the phone calls, so they are fully aware. The issue that you have is if you start posting certain things on Facebook, you are freaking some people out, um, with something that they really don't need to be freaked out about, because if you don't leave your car running, they're not bothering anybody other than, they're looking, it's a crime of opportunity, and that's all over the place. So it's kind of one of those things that it is posted, we did post it, don't leave your cars running, and don't, you know, all those, you know, um, and I believe it was in the newsletter a month ago, if I'm not mistaken, and if I didn't put it in there, uh, that is on me. Um, but just not to, to leave your car doors locked, and that's even if your car's running, leave your car doors locked, so, um, I'll let him answer to that.
Yeah, so the, the nice thing about going through what people are intending to bring up in old business and new businesses, now you can give chief a heads up saying, hey, you know, we expect this to come up, you know, have a.
It's a great, yeah, it's a great.
Have a, have a statement ready, right? So that way, it's not off, on the spot, off the cuff, you know, and potentially careless, it can be a crafted answer that says what needs to be said, allows him to say, hey, we have some ideas that we're working on that may be proactive to, you know, there's a thing we might get that proactively helps, yada, yada, but he can craft that answer. All right, any other new business that people intend to bring up on Monday?
I'm gonna surprise you guys.
Hmm?
I got something, but I'll wait till Monday night.
Uh, so, 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 Tony, so just as I, I just explained that, you know, life always moves better without surprises, what you're saying is you would prefer to surprise us?
Yeah.
Okay. Duly, duly noted, sir. Uh, and, and with that, that, uh, that brings us to the end of the agenda, we had, oh, yes, go ahead, Mayor.
No, Diane, were you trying to say something right when Tony was?
Yeah, I was just trying to, uh, I, I don't, it's not a new bit, I wanted to discuss something, I just wanted to bring something up in this work session. So, that's not new, it's old business, right now, it's just.
Yeah, yeah, so we can move on to the, uh, the non-meeting agenda portion of, of our time here this morning, and so the portion that I was looking to, or that we had set aside to discuss here, was what we all envisioned as duties for a planning and zoning clerk, uh, and a clerk of council, right? Uh, it sounded like, Diane, did you have an additional thing you wanted to address in this time?
Uh, yeah, I wanted to bring up something that I was researching, uh, for. Uh, yeah, I wanted to bring up something that I was researching uh for newsletter and communications, um, because there is a little bit of of money involved, and uh we went over it in the communications bill that I need to, you know, anyway, so I can talk about it or not, just throwing out this.
Okay, yeah, yeah, we can come back around to that. Uh, were there any other topics that people wanted to bring up in this work session? All right, well, then let's start. Uh, at the end of last Monday's work session, we had left with the task to each of us come to this meeting with our idea of what we would expect, uh, planning and zoning clerk and a clerk of council to have as duties, so that we could, uh, we could flesh those out to see how that could be appropriately staffed. Uh, so Tony, do you have that put together? Do you, what is your, uh, and I come to you first, because you were the one who first raised village staffing. Uh, so what was your uh idea for the duties of these roles?
Well, the planning and zoning clerk and code enforcement officers, like I had said, was gonna be combined. Uh, when I say planning and zoning, or you know, uh, planning and zoning duties, I'm I'm more uh, you know, concerned about the permitting process. And that being uh, you know, because that's a big part of the workload for the code enforcement officer is, you know, answering the phones and dealing with the the permitting process.
Uh, so I'm I'm trying to boil this down to sort of like a bulleted list. So if what I heard you just say was that the, in your opinion, the first most important duty for planning and zoning clerk would be to maintain and manage the permitting process.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Uh. Well, like I had said before, the minutes of a meeting, I see the, you know, the planning and zoning clerk uh, being the one that's that's going to the meetings, which would make it much easier to to uh to do the minutes.
Mm-hmm.
Uh. Well, no, I mean, I think that's really the main thing is a because the permitting process is the thing that that takes up all the time, that and answering the phones for, or I wouldn't say answering the phones, but to 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 be there in the office to take those calls and talk to people through it, instead of having Lisa doing that all the time. That would be the separation, because I, you know, I'm trying to, the way I've envisioned this is, you know, what Becky used to do and trying to split those things up.
Sure. So part of the, I hear what you're saying, part of this exercise is to take statements like the things Becky used to do. And instead of having a statement where one waves their hands and doesn't doesn't have anything actionable in that, right? Because I I can't say that I know what all of the things that Becky used to do is to take those and put those into a bulleted list that we can then move action, right? Uh, so I I'll look at my own list that I had, and that was to maintain and manage the permitting process, right? I also had noted that a planning and zoning clerk should be uh preparing the minutes. I also would expect them to do any offline research for the planning and zoning committee, right? So the planning and zoning committee should be able to hand off certain research tasks, you know, look at how other areas handle these planning and zoning issues, how to, you know, what are other ordinances that represent this kind of thing? So offline research is another that I would anticipate, uh, as well as being able to answer questions during business hours. So, you know, uh, that kind of stuff for for both residents and the administration. And I think that uh wraps up what I had anticipated for planning and zoning clerk. So I had two additional bullet points beyond which you had brought up. Does anybody else have additional duties that they would anticipate for a planning and zoning clerk?
I would also add in there, uh, you know, preparing for the meeting, the planning and zoning meeting, like putting together the agenda and getting out the packets to the members of planning and zoning.
There you go. That's a good one. I hadn't thought of that. Anyone else?
I'm thinking of that, because it wasn't wasn't done very well in this last meeting. We had a little breakdown.
Mm-hmm. All right, so I'm not hearing anybody else raise their hand on more.
So would they also be linked up with with code enforcement? Would they be doing the actual going out and looking at grass, or would they just be in the office?
Well, that's that's the question.
Well, so we were just working on the planning and zoning clerk position.
Yeah, so the, yeah, the question is, is that the set of duties that we would anticipate a planning and zoning clerk to do. Right? If, you know, and this is the body that says, you know, this is the roles, these are the duties. So if we wanted that to be the case, we write it here and.
Well, then you wouldn't need to plan, or then you wouldn't need a code enforcement officer.
Well, right. And I I believe they are two separate roles, but we are, I am not, you know, the the emperor. I am, I'm merely the one running the meeting.
I would go and say that it it sounds like the clerk without the zoning uh zoning officer or whatever code enforcement officer doesn't sound like it's enough of a job.
Uh, I don't know that that's well, A, it can certainly be a part-time thing, right?
Yeah, it'll definitely be part-time, but just taking minutes, organizing the agenda. And then I guess answering the phone and doing doing all the permit stuff when someone wants a fence, are they the one who's doing it?
Yeah, I I don't know. We we can, we can look at, you know, so my my envisioning here is that we would look at then the duties and say, you know, is, you know, how do we make this work? So we could take these titles with duties and stack them into existing people's work and say, yes, you are now these two things, or, you know, this is one job and this is another job, and there are two part-time jobs that are fifteen hours a week. Or, you know, twenty hours a month, whatever it may be, but that's, right now, I think we're just gathering the duties.
Well, I don't think you quite understand how much time is spent. Maybe the American chime in on this, how much time is spent uh with permitting. That's why I think that it is a full-time job, especially with all the fences. And, you know, this comes, this brings up a whole nother topic for me about why we require permits for all these different things. You know, that's a, that's a separate topic. And and an ability to try to reduce the workload for this for the village staff is all these permits that we require people to get. You know, recently, it's come up that, you know, the chicken permit, you gotta get a permit to have chickens. You know, we don't really have that process, you know, completely done. But, you know, the mayor can chime in about how much time is spent on permits for fences and decks and sheds and all that stuff. That's a lot of work.
Right. And I think that's part of um when, yeah, when we had this conversation where I kind of went in circles that we're starting to see a pickup in permits for fences, decks, um, the questions that come in, because some of these people, uh, they come in, they bring their papers and they're out. And then you've got other people that come in that require much more handholding through the entire process, um, lots of emails, lots of different things like that. So you know, I really wish that I would have done this and um, or maybe Eric can chime in if Eric has any idea. I would love to tell you guys how many permits we actually went through last year, and it was a lot. Um, and, you know, it depends again on exactly what you guys are wanting to do. You know, we take twenty-five dollars, we do the permit. But I will say, um, according to residents, not according to code enforcement, but residents have said nobody comes out and checks anything. Um, they get their permit and they're done. And Tony, you've heard people say that too. Nobody's gone out and looked at the holes. Nobody's gone out to make sure that it's not over the line. Nobody's done any of that. I'm not saying that we're qualified to do it. I'm not saying any of that, but, you know, it's one of those that my question to you is, what exactly are we expecting our code enforcement and our, you know, to do? Are they just expected to pass the permit and just assume that everything is done? Um, I think that's, you know, in my opinion, I think if you're gonna do a permit and you're gonna, you know, require people to make sure that they're not going over the lines or anything, just because the paper says it is doesn't mean that that's exactly where the fence is being put. Um, as you guys saw, we had one permit that was that there was some complaints about, um, that they, the company built the fence too far to the front. Um, so again, it's just one of those things that how far do you guys wanna go into it? You know, are we just paper pushing, or are we going out into the field and verifying?
I mean, we we do go into the field and verify. I do.
Well, I will tell you, residents, including people on planning and zoning, will disagree with that, and I will disagree at like, again, it depends on.
I do go out and double-check things when I'm in the field. I I do do this. I stop by and if, you know, I I give it, I give it a once-over, I stop out and answer questions. It is usually quick. People don't know, yes, I do, because it's normal, it should be part of the process.
Correct. And I think some people didn't, uh, let me rephrase that. There were people that didn't do it as part of the process within the last two years. And I think that's, you know, again, is that what we're expecting our new code enforcement officer to do? Because I agree. I and Eric, thank you for doing it, but I know that in the past it was not done, and we have um, a couple of residents that have said that it is not being done. And Tony, you know who a couple of people that I'm talking about.
Well, I mean, I can't say that just because they didn't see somebody doesn't mean.
I don't disagree with that. Yeah, I know that somebody there was in the past was not being done.
Yeah, so well, I, so I, yeah, I A, I also know that prior to two years ago was done, because I remember more than one instance where code enforcement found post holes in the wrong places or fences installed the wrong way around, and the village absolutely had people fix things.
Correct.
So, right, and I, yeah, I, but I do believe that it is, you know, and so it should be part of a code enforcement officer's responsibilities to uh, A, inspect if we have a permit that says it's gonna be built in place A. The code enforcement officer should go out and make sure that it's in where it says it should be. Now, as far as people not seeing anybody, maybe part of the process needs to be a calling card, right? A sticky pad that when the code enforcement officer goes and reviews the post holes, they have a little sticky pad that says I checked it out, have a nice day, and they slap it on the front door and nobody's, nobody take a picture of it, because we are now in the twenty-first century and everybody has the opportunity to you know, prove everything they can with a picture, because they got a camera in their pocket. And there can never be a question again as to whether or not someone was there and they left notice. But that's also outside of what we were just talking about, which was a planning and zoning clerk. And so to wrangle that back in, um, I had one other thought with a planning and zoning clerk in relation to code enforcement, because one of the things that a planning and zoning clerk could do to offload some of the, it could offload some of the administrative tasks of a code enforcement officer, right? So the code note or code enforcement officer could prepare the evidence for a violation, right? Pass that off to a planning and zoning clerk who actually would write up the documentation, draft the letter that gets sent out and send that out. So that could be another bullet point in the duties of a planning and zoning clerk, I think.
Well, and that that goes along the lines of basically, and and I'm gonna say it my words, that would almost be more of a, not more of it. Um, an assistant to the code enforcement officer.
Well, I mean, the code enforcement officer as the person who actually goes out and looks at things. And then the clerk is the person who says, okay, you saw this or that, right? Give me a list, I'll do the paperwork. And would then, of course, free up the officer to do more walking around and looking at things.
I I don't, I don't envision, you know, the the thing that I see happening here is that we're, you know, we're not creating a c- a position that someone's gonna stick with. You know, if, you know, I see this heading in a direction where we're trying to, uh, you know, I don't know, minimize the work for the code enforcement officer, when really, that position needs to be a full-time. I mean, that's why I keep going back to combining these two things, the planning and zoning clerk and the code enforcement officer into one position, so they have full, you have someone here that's full-time. And and I hear everyone talking about, you know, trying to make two different jobs, two different part-time jobs. That's not, I think, the 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 direction that this should head in, because we are continually, I think that's why we're constantly looking for a code enforcement officer, because it's not a position that anybody wants to stick with. It's a stepping stone or or a, you know, something to kill some time, so I retire.
I could jump in real quick. So I think the crux of the issue, having been through multiple municipalities, I don't think there's necessarily a wrong answer here, except municipalities, you know, you you have a certain level of service that you wanna get to your residents, right? And different municipalities have gone down the path. Some have had P and Z clerks who do a lot of duties. Um, they've created part-time and full-time positions. It really comes down to the service level and, quite frankly, your your coverage, right? And I think the biggest crux in a small village like this, from my observation, is simply that you do have a little trouble maintaining people, but that that's that's at all levels. You have officers that move on, and you have people that move on, and and sometimes you find someone that fits in for multiple years. And that's wonderful. So I think you have to look at it from a kind of a management standpoint, and I think the problem here is that unlike larger communities, in which you've got multiple full-time people, so if one of them drops out and you've got coverage, here, if you combine positions into a full-time position, you lose that person, you are seriously hosed. And and it it you lose institutional knowledge and you have no overlap coverage. And I can just tell you, I've been through this, having been the lone man standing on a couple of occasions, as you've lost code enforcement and clerks, you know, it it's valuable, I think, to have overlap and coverage and maintaining some type of institutional flow of process. When you have part-timers, whether it's, you know, somewhere between twenty and thirty hours a week, they are able to cover. And I think your biggest, my observation of your biggest problem of attainment is the lack of benefits in the sense of some type of insurance coverage, because there's a number of people out there that need to work part-time and who are qualified individuals. But they are forced to find full-time work, because that is, in many cases, the qualifier for getting insurance coverage, right? So it's a, it's just the way our current system works out there. And if you were to be unique and offer insurance coverage, you could get a good loyal multi-year staff at the part-time level. And so that's that's one way to handle it. And I think for your size village and your budget, it could be the most effective way to maintain that situation.
Okay, now you're saying that without, I mean, the most expensive thing you offer to an employee is health insurance. I mean, it's absolutely astounding expensive. So even even with poor coverage, so I and you have the Affordable Care Act that you have to balance against and make sure that you're meeting their requirements. And so I I I do agree that this has been a, I've been in this in the business environment for forty-five years, and this is always a discussion about can you or can you not afford health insurance for people? And so companies that are are even have more employees than we do, uh, you know, make a decision that they just simply can't afford it. And we need to look for people who, it's it's a fact of life, we need to look for that second worker in the household whose spouse is carrying the insurance. I mean, it's it's business. Now, we're a municipality, so we're not business, we're, but we're not social workers either. And, you know, just take a look at that. I I think that is a that it is harder sometimes to find people if you don't have full benefits. True, of course it is, but but do do people automatically stay? If people automatically stay, no one would leave nationwide. No one would leave.
So.
That so that that's not a just a just a generic uh reason to 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 do something like that. So that's.
Even observation, maybe. I think the things that I've been here long term, because it fits my needs, and quite frankly, I don't need the insurance. So you're right, you can find that second worker in those cases, but it takes longer. It just depends on how you wanna provide service, and I'm just giving you my observation of functionality at this very small level. So.
And I do, I do agree, but I do agree, just to follow up with that, right? But I do agree that anytime you have cross-training and you have people, any anytime you can have more than one person know what's going on for a particular job, of course, it's absolutely the absolutely important to do. It's a very important to do. And uh, I am all for that and how these uh how how this cross-training happens, however, logistically, in terms of number of people, however, it can happen, it needs to happen. There's, there's no question about that. So you're not left and lurch with one person's laptop wondering what the hell they were doing. So absolutely, that's true.
So I, I think Eric's, uh, observation is interesting. I think there's also maybe more than one way to. To, to accomplish that, right? Think there may be a difference between. Uh, subsidizing a part-time worker's healthcare and merely getting them access to the insurance group, right? That's, you know, it could, it could be, there could be more than one way to get to a, a place. And I think that is a takeaway that I'll, I'll grab for the finance committee because I think that's probably where that would belong. Uh, and then we can, we can move forward with the current discussion, right? So I, we have captured, or I have captured in my bulleted list. Uh, managing and maintaining for planning and zoning clerk, managing and maintaining the permit process, preparing the planning and zoning meetings. Um, being available for offline research for planning and zoning or the administration. Answering, being available to answer questions for the public or the administration, doing the meeting prep for planning and zoning. Uh, and, uh, possibly, and I'll make this a possibly. Uh, doing some amount of code enforcement for, or administrative work for code enforcement. Was there anything, anybody else?
Well, the other thing that's in the code. About the only thing that's in our code about the planning and zoning clerk. Is that they are to maintain a record of all the building permits. That comes out of our code.
Okay, so that's a, that's another bullet point.
And that's the only thing I think that's, that's, uh, in our code that the planning and zoning clerk's supposed to do.
Sure. If, if we, if slash when we move forward with these ideas, we would be, you know. Making an adjustment there, right? We would codify what the responsibilities are of this title within the village. So. But maintaining, uh, building records, I've added that to my bulleted list. I think that's pretty exhaustive for planning and zoning clerk. I'll give one last, uh, one last call out. Uh, and then we can move on to clerk of council. Uh, and I'll start this time just to get the ball rolling with the items I had put on my list. Which was prepare the council meeting minutes. And, uh, prepare legislation. And be available to do offline research for counsel.
The other thing that I've come up with and it's just because of the, you know, the chicken. Permit issue coming up here recently is that there doesn't seem to be anyone, I guess the thing for the clerk of courts to do would be to make sure. That when the ordinances or resolutions are passed, that that information is. Well, I wouldn't say the information, is it, well, let's just take the chicken code, for example, is that. You know, we should, the, w- once that ordinance was passed, we needed to add, uh, the chicken. The, the permit to the, uh, the, the cost of the permit to the fee schedule. We also needed to, you know, incorporate the, um. Uh, in the chicken issue, there was a checklist that kind of disappeared and didn't get. So I think that what I'm getting at is that the clerk of courts needs to maybe. Or not courts, clerk of council needs to. Follow up with the legislation and make sure that those things that are called out for are being, you know, processed properly. I don't know if I'm saying that right. I mean.
Come in. I actually heard two different things in there. One was maintaining our codified ordinances, right? Because. Part of what should have traveled into the codification and into our record is whatever that checklist is that you're. That you are talking about, right? We have a, our, our codified ordinances are rife with examples of legislation that says, see exhibit A. And exhibit A is, is, is lost to the ages, right? So that would be one thing that for sure. You know, a person who's responsible to the codified ordinance is saying, yes, everything that goes with this ordinance. Is in record and in the codification. So that's one bullet point I heard from you. Uh, the other would be. Um, managing downstream implications of legislation, right? So meaning. That, uh, you know, when legislation is passed, that then does things like creates a new fee. Right? That person then would be responsible to maintain the process or follow through. That those downstream implications are taken care of, that these schedules are updated, that. Permit applications are created, whatever is necessary. It would be a, a, a role that's responsible for following up on that.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a hard one to put into words here. Good luck with that.
Managing downstream implications of past legislation. I thought that's how I would say it at the.
And Brian, in your clerk of council, did you have prepare the meeting packets as well?
I didn't. I had meeting minutes, but not packets. Hold on, let me.
That seems. That alleyish.
Okay. Would they also do the, the posting of meetings, right? That's something that is. A duty that's elsewhere, but would that be a clerk of, a council responsibility?
There you go.
It really just, you're, you're getting a list right now, but then it will depend on whether that person is an employee or not.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
For practical purposes.
Right, yeah, we're, we're just, like I said, making a bulleted list. Uh, because again, uh, what I envision is we're going to take this bulleted list against all the things that people are currently doing. And shuffle it all around to fill in. Uh, roles. That's, that's kind of how I envision it. And I suspect that it's gonna, you know. I have some suspicions of what'll be the outcome, but I'm trying not to drive it towards an end. But, okay, so post-meetings. Any, what other responsibilities do we expect, uh, for a clerk of council? Would a clerk of council be the person who? Uh, no, I, that idea came and went. I forgot it by the time I got to the end of the sentence.
I take that as a no.
Yeah, yeah, probably not. Uh, anything else? Okay, then I think we have accomplished what I wanted to accomplish regarding planning and zoning clerk and clerk of council. Right? Um, we can think on that and we will bring it around to another discussion regarding staffing and, and needs. Right? Uh, in a future work session. Uh, and now we can shift, we can pivot over to what Diana wanted to bring up regarding the newsletter. And communications.
Okay. Um. As far as, um, I was looking for, there is some debate about whether, you know, some people would like. For example, to have the, the way that, that the thought process started, it was some people were saying, well, why, why can't we just? Have this electronically or why do we have this on paper, et cetera? So. And the, in the directory, I'm collecting, uh, information for people about whether they want their direct, the membership, wants their directory. Paper or electronic. And so I was, and we had discussed in the past of, um. Having, uh, notifications electronically to people or texting or emailing or whatever. So. I went back to the, just to do some research, I went back to see if there was some easy way we could piggyback on the website we already have. And was there add-on product that might do some of these things or one of these things or whatever? So in talking to the vendor. There is, uh, something they call a subscription, uh, service for email and notifications, subscription notifications. So. What it is, it is a self-service add-on to the website. So you click a button if you want to. Uh, and you enter your email address. And then on the backend administratively, what we do is, is we. We decide, uh, what we want to, uh, have on this list. So for example. If we want to have, um. A notification that the newsletter is ready, available, newsletter is available on, on the website. So we could have a box, they could. If they want to be notified when the newsletter is available, they check that box. And then when the. Admin posts the newsletter to the website. There's an automatic notification to that person or it automatically drags that newsletter as an attachment, whichever. They're, they're notified to go that it's available. You can do the same thing with, uh, legislation. If someone's really interested, anytime, anytime there's legislation about the swimming pool, I want to be notified. So that would be a box. You check that box and anytime we posted an ordinance or. A resolution or anything else, uh, that had the topic of swimming pool, they would get a notification of that. Um, and I was also thinking we could use it for volunteering. So. Volunteer opportunities might be one where there, you could check that if you want to know anytime the village needs volunteers. For something, a project, you check this box. And then we would have to, we would post that volunteer opportunity somewhere in the website. The web, the program would see that and throw out that notification, that email back to the, the resident that. Volunteers are needed for something. So, um, this product, I, I think it's, uh, because it the, it's really just. On the resident to, to subscribe if they want to. And it's a way for us, another way for us to get information out to people when they want it and as they want it. And so it is the subscription, uh, the add-on to the webpage is $600 a year. And I think it's a reasonable price, uh, for this. And, um, I want to. I'm going to get, uh, talk to customer service on Mondays. So to, to make sure there's no, nothing else that we need to know about this. Uh, how easy it is to implement and all that sort of thing. So. Uh, I've seen a couple of YouTube videos that go through pieces and parts of setting it up. It seems very simple. So, uh, of course it all requires, uh, our administrative support to post things timely. But, uh, to the webpage. So, um, anyway, uh, I just wanted to bring that up because, uh. I'm not sure, uh, if I think the, uh, Mayor Hughes was in the. Communications meeting with us. She, uh, thinks it's a good idea as well. The other two members of communication committee thought it was a good idea. And so, uh, this may have to though come through, uh, appropriations if there's not $600 extra in the website. Uh, budget. So I wanted to, um, get any, anyone else's feedback on this, um, idea.
Yeah, I think it helps from happening to search through the website if you're looking for something. I mean, they would already be updated on it. So.
So I think it sounds great. I don't think the $600 is unreasonable for the product. I think that for it to be utilized well, it will add. A fair amount of administrative work on the front end, meaning so if we're to take Diane's example. Uh, someone says, I want to receive notification anytime there's a legislation regarding the pool. Right? That would mean that somebody, when they are uploading legislation, it can't just be an ordinance. They also have to add some sort of categorization. That's appropriate, right? And managing those categories, making sure that the categories are created. Making sure that they are accurately updated, right? That metadata to the, to the record. Uh, that's, that's where the, the pudding is, right? That's where the meat of getting it done is because. It would be, it would potentially be more than one category as well, right? Because. Uh, thinking back on the legislation that repaired the pools, well, there was appropriations, there were, you know. Contracts, there were, you know, and so there's appropriations legislation, there's, you know. Multiple categories that would necessarily have to be administered there. Which I don't think is undoable, right? I think it's something that happens all the time. We just need to make sure that. We know what's involved and that the people who are doing it know what's involved and are, you know. Okay, prepared to take on that responsibility or that additional duty.
I, I think that is, that's true. I mean, I think it's a responsibility. I want it to be the responsibility of. Communications community to, uh, oversee or make sure communications are happening. So, um, I am going to get the, uh, specific directions on what's required in order to make that hook happen and that email go out. And so, um, then work with the, uh, mayor on. On, uh, how we are, how we would look today if we started doing this or what changes we might need to make. Uh, and, and I don't know what those are, what that would be at this point, because I, I don't know how, uh, where the hook has to be. To, to make that happen. So, uh, at this point, uh, it's a good point, Brian. And of course, it needs to be something that's not onerous. Uh, for, um, staff to have to do. And, uh, that's part of the. Making sure that, uh, we understand the product before we make the plunge.
And I, you know, and if it is too tedious on some of the smaller things, I mean, just the simple fact of. Like, you know, we've talked about just, any time that you upload anything about the newsletter or, you know, just maybe not. I think the legislation is a great idea. That might be like he's alluding to. If, if you start sending people, um. For example. The appropriations, there could be 12 different appropriations and you're sending this to them and they're going, what is this? Um, you, this is all for the pool. And then you start getting questions after questions and you're like, no, one of those lines was for the pool. The rest of it is. So, I mean, it could create, um, confusion. So maybe if it was only just the, you know, maybe if it was. Resolutions versus ordinances. I know that then you don't have the police officers when they're hired. So, yeah, I mean, I think it's a matter of, um. Not for transparency purposes, but for more confusion purposes. I think maybe there are some documents that wouldn't get attached. You know, I think if it says, we're doing, we're spending $50,000 on the pool and not sending the appropriation. Is probably still sufficient just because the pool, it says how much it is in there.
Right.
Um, I think the only time to send the appropriation is if it was specifically that, maybe? I don't know. So, I mean, I could see where you could really ruffle some feathers with people getting some stuff going. What do you mean we're spending this and not understanding that that was actually part of a different project? So, um. But I mean, yeah, I mean, being able to sign up for the newsletter, being able to sign up for different things like that, you know. Notify me anytime you have a new food truck coming in. I mean, I understand you can go to the website, but. We added that one last minute and didn't go so well, but, um, their truck was broke yesterday. He felt so bad. Um, but anyways, you know, there's certain people that, trust me, they call me all the time. Who, who's in the, who's in the village this week? So that would be great for them to be able to sign up for, um, the newsletter. Diane, I know that the answer, I believe the answer is no on this, but the other part is, um, can it? Is there anything that could also connect this to text messages or only email?
This one is only email.
Okay.
Yeah, so I still have the, uh, I thought in the next communication meeting, uh, which we should schedule. Uh, I would go over once again, the, the texting companies that are available and what the pricing is on that. Right. And, uh, you know, it just, those get a little complicated if, but, but I know that you were not interested in sending out a bunch of texts all the time.
No.
So it is complicated when you send out lots of tech, you gotta keep track of how many and then the price goes up and. You know, blah, blah, blah. So it'd have to be some, you know, probably keep it simple.
Civic Plus does have a, a text notification add-on for the website as well. Uh, because when we were looking at that a year ago, I had done a little research, but it was. Considerably more than any of the other options because it was not based on the number of texts you send. Or even the number of people you have opted in. It was based on your population. So it was. I think I, I could probably go through my emails and find the numbers because I got a quote, but, you know, the first year it was. Maybe 50 cents a resident. And then it went up after that, but at 50 cents a resident, it was. Way more than any of the options that we were looking at, but it was nice because it was unlimited. You could have multiple categories. I mean, it was. It was, you know, the. Uh, the, you know, the luxury premium brand versus, you know, store, store brand. It was.
Two things I'll say real quick. One, just going back to what Diane and Tiffany were talking about with. Confusion and what you send out or not, I would not envision, you know, an alert like. Oh, here's the pool legislation that just passed and then it just has the copy of the ordinance or the legislation. I would envision like more of a simple description of it. Hey, we just approved $50,000 for the baby pool. Construction should start in two months. We look to to be open this summer. Hey, we just passed our budget and not necessarily include the budget in it, but you know, the budget has been approved. Check the website if you would like to see it all. Not not actually sending all the little ordinances and if we shuffle some money around to get the pool ready.
Right.
Really need to tell them that.
To that.
Something significant to say. And then Brian, with that text thing, I'll just throw my hat in and say 50 cents per resident would be what? $1,500 for us a year.
No, not, is that a year or a month?
No, that was a year. It was an annual number.
And and for that, I mean, I know we're not made of money, but that doesn't seem I mean, we would have to see at the end of the year, did we send out four texts? In which case, wow, that was expensive. But if we sent out 40, maybe they'd be like, oh, that was, that was worthwhile.
Well, everybody knows I'm on board for it. I think that we, again, forget about the, the hard part for me is you forget to put one thing in the newsletter and you've missed your opportunity for 30 days to tell somebody about something. And I don't have, you know, not trying to go into the weeds, you get a sewer project that a road's going to be closed or this or that. We have, we put it on the website. Nobody goes to our web, well, the majority of the residents do not go to our website seven days a week, 24 hours a day to see if there's a road closed. And I I for one, I I'm always annoyed when I go even in when I know that the road's going to be closed because we told people it was going to be closed for one day and it was closed for three. And even I was annoyed because I had to go all the way back around. So and I didn't warn anybody else. So it would have been nice, you know, to see that and me be able to send out something very specific. Wildwood's going to be closed today until 5:00 PM. We don't have that opportunity. Not if you don't have to sign up for it if you don't want it. So again, it's just, it's another opportunity to be able to reach out to the residents that want to be reached out to. I think it will be time consuming on the forefront, trying to get people registered. But, you know, I mean, I know I like the ones that we get from Nixal in the event that there is an actual emergency. So I don't think we would overuse it, but I think if we had unlimited opportunities, it would be nice to remind people, you know, when you have elections that, you know, tonight is this, or we're going to talk about the building at Hawthorne tonight at this and just send out a quick reminder. You know, I don't know that we would do it for every single food truck because not everybody cares about it, but hey, there's a food truck on Friday. Or, you know, again, sewer projects are going to be in the Lakewood area today. Something as simple as a sentence long, you know, it didn't matter how many times I told people that there was a sewer project going on in Lakewood. I still had people complaining that they did, they were not notified that day that they were going to be blocking their driveway. And I'm again, there's only so much you can do.
Absolutely. There is always only so much you can do. I wanted to roll back a little bit to Mark's expectation. Of, you know, if you're getting notified that there's legislation regarding we, we should look to see what the, what the capabilities or the functionality of the product is because what I was imagining, and I can be completely wrong, I just know a little bit about web design and the way these things are made, is that the way a product like that would probably work is, you know, it's set up that when legislation is uploaded, it says, oh, there's new legislation. It has these categories and poof, it sends a pre-formatted email off to the people who asked for it with a link to the legislation, right? But there wouldn't, I'm guessing, be the opportunity to customize each one with a brief summary of the legislation unless that's some, you know, unless it's in the product and they're doing it away. So I'm just saying that we need to check that.
Well, right, the the thing, the thing does also allow at sending a mass email to, so for example, in the case Mark mentioned, if we, if we did not if we decided it was too complicated to, I don't know yet, but we decided it's too complicated to have a checkbox and for legislation, what we could do is phrase it a different way. If you want a notification about certain, like cool, we could actually then, we could send a a composed email to those people who had checked that box and explain and do an explanation like that, if that is something that we wanted to do. So I know that is an option. So we just need to, you know, go go through that, tease it out a little bit and see what makes sense for different. Yeah.
Well, I think.
So.
So I haven't heard anybody say that's a bad idea. So I think that we have gotten enough buy-in to move forward.
I just like the timing. Just, I mean, I don't think it's a bad idea, but I'm just, I would, you know, prefer text messages to emails if that were a part of this conversation.
See, you don't have to opt in then. It's, it is an opt-in. Yeah. So I understand that you would prefer text to email.
And that, I would, you know, I would be one of those people probably want to be notified about this stuff. And that's what I'm getting at is if we were going to do something like this, it's just, you know, because I think, well, we all have our phones with us all the time. So you're going to get that. Whereas there's some people like myself, well, I get emails too, but there's a lot of people that don't, you know, get their emails as often as the text messages. I mean, that's my only comment on this.
Yeah. What's nice about, what's nice about this is it's tied into the website. So it's, the information is already being made available and you're just taking advantage of that, that conduit that's already there. It's not like someone has to, oh, I'm in charge of doing text messages now, you know, I'm in admin and now I've got a, it's not like that. It's it's taking advantage of what's already being done, which is, which is the beauty of it, you know, is not, it's not requiring a lot of administrative work theoretically anymore.
And Diane, I think the only thing that I'll, I'm going to piggyback on what Tony said, is I think this is a perfect example of communications. I think this is a, this is a great opportunity to get additional people involved and get, you know, information out to people that might not be checking the website every single day. But Tony brings up my point is I personally wouldn't opt in for any of those things, not being the mayor, not being on council, because I get 1,000 emails a day. I wake up to 250 average emails in the morning because of my jobs. So it's pointless, you know, I literally go through every single morning and just delete and except for the ones that I, that are very important to me. And if I had six come across from Minerva Park, I'm definitely, you know, it would just be too much. But the text is also like he's alluding to, that is just something that I know residents have asked for. I personally would also be interested in. But I also think that we would have to keep it to a minimum because you don't want it over. So it would, we would as a group decide what do we want to notify residents strictly road closings and such? Don't want to get into that. But my point being, as you're seeing, I I think that the, the text alerts is just as much of a priority as this one. And I'm glad we're working on this one, but I think hand in hand. And I know you're going to do it in communications. I'm, that is the one thing that I said I really wanted done before the end of last year, and I'll say it today. This is something that I would like to see both of those implemented before the end of this year.
Okay. Well, I I don't see why we can't. I think it's very doable within the next month for us to we're all willing to make a decision and and pricing is good. Just, I I don't see why we can't get it done. So, yeah, no, that's great. I I know I, we have a text, you know, a group text for the community garden. And there's 15 people on that group text. And if I have my alarm, I'm like,
Oh, yeah.
Sometimes, you know, when they get going, it's ding, 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 ding. It's like, oh, my God.
I think that you need to keep it to a minimum. People don't want a Minerva Park text every single day. And I think it should be just for, you know, but yeah, group texts, I just want to jump off a bridge. So.
My family does that and it drives me nuts.
Me too.
As far as the texts go, you know, no more than one a day, no more than three or four, three, maybe four a week, if that.
Right. And I'm thinking, exactly. I'm thinking along your lines. I'm thinking no more than one a week unless there's something crazy. So.
Well, I mean, when you think about it, you know, like a food truck reminder would be great whenever there is one. Road closures don't happen very often. Snow emergencies don't happen very often. Maybe major legislation like, hey, we approved the, the, the community building plans were approved last night. You know, you're, you're, I don't, there's not enough to talk about with the village government.
There's not. You know, I think the biggest one that I missed that I want to make sure.
Another text out today. What are we up to six? No, there's, there's just not that much going on.
Reminding people of the late cleanup would be my, my favorite one. So, yeah.
Okay.
Diane, thanks for taking this on here. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I I'm.
Heading forward.
I, well, it's, I'm, I'm happy. I, I like it. I like to do it. So there. Because I I like it.
Yeah, I'm very happy as well to hear these ideas coming.
All right.
Well, then we have handled all of the, all of the items we had intended to discuss. Did anybody else have anything that they wanted to, wanted to bring up? Tony, any chance you want to, you know, forego the surprise and give us some preparation? Let us.
I'm going to leave you wondering because I'm not sure that I want to get into it, to be honest with you, but I'm, I'm, you know, well, let me tell you, I'm just fed up with the country. And I'm seeing the crap going on in our country spilling over into council. You know, there's a little, a little preview of what I had to. Hopefully I'm tired and I don't want to bring it up. That's all I'm telling you. Yeah, give me something to think about till Monday.
Okay. So I obviously am done in eight, I I have eight minutes, but you guys can do whatever. Um, I, I think, I don't know if I forwarded you guys. I'm just going to give you guys my little end. I don't know if I forwarded you guys the asphalt quote that I got. We had someone else come out and give us a quote for that. So we should have two quotes here, hoping in the next day or two. I'm going to go with Monday. What else did I have for you guys? You guys got the building. Don't want to get into that right now. We are, as you know, working with Kim and everybody, but if everybody will look at the floor plan, if everybody will look at all that information. Internally, we have a couple tweaks that we want to make. That's all I'm going to say about that right now. But, you know, it's a good, it is, we're extremely pleased with it. And then what else was there? The Jesse will be there Monday. He emailed me. And I think that was it. Asphalt thing was my biggest thing. I want to get that ball rolling, like as soon as possible. I want, meaning start legislation for it. It can't be done until April or May anyways, but I want to start getting legislation rolling for getting that walkway fixed. So hopefully you guys.
Are you seeing that Jesse's got some stuff that he's going to be reporting? Is that why?
I don't think, no. In the finance meeting, Tony, we had talked about the TIF funds and possibly borrowing against them and this and that. And without going crazy into, you know, I mean, Kim, Kim does not, anybody else that was in that meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, Kim does not feel comfortable at some of those numbers to even think that we could plan to do both of those things this year. We had discussed, you know, possibly borrowing against the TIF funds and he's, we have gotten information for Kim and Jesse, we're working on getting the tip information back to them so they can start reviewing it and getting, finding out whether, all of our, all of our options. So whether it be loans, whether it be, we're looking at the big picture of how to finance the building and how to get the lakes, the lake project moving along and whether or not it could even possibly be this year. So Jesse's just working on some stuff like that, but we are not.
Issues.
Yeah, we are not going to have answers Monday.
Right. Finance, definitely financing. So it's some, it's going to be be, before we, so is the order that we're going to clarify the financing issues? And then have the final discussion about moving forward or not, or how, how we move forward on the building?
Um, at this point, no, I mean, at this point, I would love to give them a little bit of time to work on it. I think it's, in in my opinion, it's going to be a one versus the other, but like you guys all know, we still don't know exactly what it's going to cost. We still have, you know, I, no, I would like to still continue to move forward with the building and setting up a time, not today, five minutes before I'm leaving to talk about the building. But yes, I would like, you know, I think that that needs to be, you know, something that.
So is that, is that like, can we, will we be, would we be able to do that in the work session at the middle of the month?
I'm totally fine with that. Because I think that would give us some time to do some tweaks that we want to do. But again, I don't know that we are I don't know, the tweaks that we want to do are are details. So I don't know that there's anything that we really need to do at this point. I mean, as far as the design itself goes, there's a couple of things that we can talk about on the next Monday, not next Monday, but in two Mondays and go over some of those things, get your guys' feedback and then see where we are.
We can also have the architects there for a discussion.
We could do that. So that's up to you guys. If that's what you guys want to do in the middle of the month.
Well, my only question is, is, you know, the, we've come to this, to the same place, you know, I like, I mean, the design is very nice, except I knew that as soon as I looked at it, I I could hear Tiffany going, the bathrooms, the bathrooms, how many bathrooms are there?
You, you. Just so you know, that's the tweak.
That's the thing, right? So, but I just, you know, we came to the same point in the road a couple of years ago, whenever that was, but where we couldn't, we had, we just couldn't afford what we wanted. So and, you know, we, you know, at that point, we, we were proposing doing it in phases. So I don't know if that is even something that there's a will of council and the administration to even consider, or if the architect would even consider it. But in order to 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 move it into the affordability range. And so I'm just, I guess I'm kind of asking, I'm curious. I know you're running out of time, but I was.
I think that's, I think that's a fair answer to ask into, you know, when they're there, whether or not that there's something. My guess is it's probably difficult to bid it out and it would probably go a little higher if we did it that way. I think right now, yeah, I think right now we all know what the concerns are. We all know that the construction prices have just gone through the roof and they're going to continue to go through the roof. So yeah, I mean, it it's, it's just going to keep going up. So I think here's what I would say. This is going to be the most horrible thing I'm about to say, but we've done this, like you said, Diane, three times, two times, three times, four times, to an extent, you know, we keep getting the same typical numbers. Now granted, if we would have done this about two years ago, maybe it would have been less because the construction prices have gone up so much in the last little bit. But at this point, they're not going down for years. I mean, we, I think we all can agree to disagree on that. This is where we are. We either need to quit talking about it or we need to move forward. So because it, at this point, we've spent enough money.
I'm going to bring up again, you know, now that we've got these numbers in and I brought this up before, I'm bringing it up again and again, is that if this project was, was broken down into parts that can be done under $250,000, then you eliminate prevailing wage. And that, that's the thing about government projects is that they're all prevailing wage projects, which in my opinion increases the cost by 30% easy. You know, just because of all the prevailing, all that paperwork and the process that goes into that, you know, so you know, maybe in another time we can talk about that.
Well, you know, prevailing, I I I understand that. The other thing about prevailing wages that, you know, it's there to protect, I'll get my union hand on, it's there to protect the workers so that they get a better wage, which is the whole point of it. Is that they're not being, you know, people bid out projects. And that's why the federal government always has the wages set. When I I've worked on bids for that, for call centers and, you know, they, you cannot bid a call center rep at $5 an hour. There is a minimum amount to keep the playing field level. And so someone's not, not hurting employees by it. So there's a reason for this. And I, so Phil, I understand, of course. But but philosophically, I mean, it's, it's a, so.
I've got a vast majority of the project.
Way, a way to, a way to be more compassionate. It's the $15 an hour minimum wage discussion. Is what is, you know, how, how invested are we as a society in a living wage? So my soapbox now, I got off.
Wow, but there's, I mean, a prevailing wage, I mean, the lowest wage is probably $25 an hour. I mean, that's for a guy pushing a broom. You're not mentioning that skilled contract, you know, okay, I'm.
Oh, no, you guys are, no, 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 you guys are fine. I'm out. I have to go. I've got to get. Oh, no, you, you guys are, no, 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 you guys are fine. I'm out. I have to go. I've gotta get.
I, I think we're out.
Removed are the two single-use bathrooms inside the office area. Those are, to me, make the most sense to remove.
And I, I, we've already asked if we, here's, just so you guys can look at the plan, I already asked if I could remove the family bathroom and turn that into something else. And the answer is yes. And that's the one I wanna get rid of. So, um.
I didn't see any, I didn't see any, uh, mop-up room. I saw a closet, but the, the thing that, the thing that everybody wants to eliminate is, is when the poor guy comes to clean the place. You know, there's no place for, there's no utility closet for the, the bucket and.
The entire downstairs is a storage area. The whole basement is a storage area. So for the record, it can be stored on there.
Okay.
Well, but there's, you can't get plumbing down in the bay, or it's difficult to get a drain into the basement because the, the, uh, this, the line going out of the building is four foot above the floor.
Right. So, but there, there will be places for that. And, and those tweaks are all gonna be, I mean, they, Ted has been amazing. Um, but as far as the restrooms go, and Mark, just so you know, that is open for discussion because, you know, it's direct, it's not like it's a far walk. The difference is, is during something like this, it is nice for employees to not have to interact with general public. That said, how often is general public in there? But then how often are we gonna clean the bathrooms? Because with sanitizing and all of that, so I'm not opposed to that whatsoever. And here's Diane. The first thing I said is, we literally, in most of our meetings, everybody could legit go to the bathroom at the exact same time. There are so many bathrooms in this place now.
And I'm looking at it for more when the community is using.
Correct. That's, that is what it's for.
Two office bathrooms are gonna be locked because we're gonna lock off the office area. And not the ones on the outside.
Right. Absolutely. So that was.
Christmas party.
Yeah, the ones that are, the idea was that, yeah, you have a secure area so people could come in, go to the community room without touching any of the other areas of the building. And you have to have bathrooms that they can access for that.
Correct. And that was the point of why we, we thought about, you know, cause we did, we went back and forth between, why can't we just use these over here? Because there's a million of them. Um, why do we need our own? And then you start thinking about, well, it, it is nice to have your own, that you don't have the general public and you know, everybody coming in and using those restrooms. And so, but anyways, those are all, those are, you, you guys hit the only points that I really made too. So I'm out, you guys. Thank you for everything. Are you guys all out too or no?
Uh, I was wrapping it up, so I was, I was throwing it out there for any, uh,
Yes.
Anything additional, but otherwise I'm, I am of the opinion we can move to adjourn.
Second.
All right. Everybody have a good day.
All right.